Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call to order, the town council meeting for April 2nd, 2012. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing afterwards. Councilor Dolan, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing for a moment of silence for those people who serve us here and abroad. Thank you. All right, tonight, I just have a couple of opening comments and then we're going to, you know, move to public comment. First thing is, is that, Margot, I know I haven't brought this up to you, but Mr. O'Keefe left the council. Could we not wait a year and go ahead with his service awards now?
On order.
They're on order?
Yep.
So, could you get in touch with Sean and see if he wants to come in? More than welcome to. If he doesn't, it's his decision, whatever he would like to do. Okay. Just a couple of things, housekeeping issues, and then we'll move to the Primex Prime Award. Just want to go over a couple of things with the council as we go forward here. Community communications. I'd just like to review a couple of things with you guys, some guidelines as we go forward. When we are contacted by our constituents, the town manager, staff, and the media outlets, I would appreciate it if we could informally commit to returning those emails, phone calls, requests, et cetera, within 24 hours. For example, if a councillor is contacted by a reporter, try to call back. If you can be responsive, please do so. If you can answer the question, then answer. If you don't know the answer, please refer to the town manager or back to the chair. Emails to the entire town council. All right, let me, what I'd like to do is, we'd like to try to respond, and I would try to respond within the first 24 hours and then copy all of you accordingly. If you feel compelled to respond within the first 24 hours, just make sure you copy everybody else. I don't want to inhibit anybody from responding to anybody, but if we could just all stay in communication on things from the public. Meeting guidelines. During the meeting, I'd like us to have all comments from the audience be directed to the chair. Once we receive the entire testimony, I would ask for input from the council. I'll generally direct a request for response for the entire council with one question. For example, "Gentlemen, does anyone have any questions for this person or on this subject?" versus going one councillor at a time. Try to keep things moving along. Of course, this will vary depending on the subject that we're talking about. Additionally, I'd also like to ask that if one councillor is speaking, that we please yield the floor to that individual until they've completed their entire statement without interruption. The same guideline goes for those coming forward to the audience during public comment or public hearing. The reason I bring that up is, is a number of people have mentioned, especially during planning board meetings, that they're somewhat intimidated to come down and speak in front of them. Just want them to know that they're welcome here, they want to hear what they have to say, and when they have the floor, they have the floor. That's all I have for now, if anybody has any questions. All right, seeing them, we'll move to public comment. Dave, we have the Primex Prime Awards, CEO Ty Gagnon of Primex. Is he here this evening?
Yes.
Mr. Gagnon, please, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council. As the chair said, I'm with Primex. We're a public entity risk pool, and we provide the town of Londonderry's workers' compensation and property and liability coverage. And I come with congratulations tonight. The town of Londonderry has achieved our prime award, and that's recognition of risk management best practices. The town joined Primex in July of 2011, and has since that time has been working very diligently to adopt our 10 best practices, which include such things as an active joint loss management committee, which the town of Londonderry has, various policies around seatbelt use, slip, trip, and fall prevention, the proper posting of state and federal postings in clearly marked areas, harassment and discrimination training, a written safety program, among other things. And it's quite impressive to think that the town, in joining Primex as of July, was able to accomplish this by February of this year. And given that accomplishment, the town now realizes 2.5 percent off its combined total for its workers' compensation and property and liability contributions. So, if you look at what we're doing now, is we're prorating the town's 2.5 percent discount from February to June of this year, which equates to approximately $5,000 in savings. And for next year, 2013, the town will save $13,000 a year based on this accomplishment. And I really think it speaks volumes to the active joint loss management committee that you have in place, to your management, your department heads, and throughout the staff and at the governing board level of the town. It's, again, such a short period of time to achieve this. We don't see that all that often, but again, I think it speaks volumes to the folks that you have here and the culture that's been adopted and put into place.
Well, thank you. Dave, congratulations to you and your staff. More money for the SALT fund.
Really, kudos goes to the Joint Loss Management Committee, which is consists of about 10 members, both on management and employee side, and also Steve Cotton from my office, who's been the coordinator and the motivator behind the scenes. Done a great job.
Mr. Gagnon?
I have a plaque for, and I'll just read it for the council and the audience. "In recognition of achieving the PRIME III designation presented to the town of Londonderry for adopting risk management best practices and ongoing commitment to manage risks to employees, residents, and facilities presented on this day, April 2nd, 2012." Congratulations.
Thank you. May I approach? I'd like to present that to the town manager.
Certainly.
Thanks, Ty. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in this evening.
It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. Next, under public comment, we have Chief William Hart.
I've asked Chief McCaffrey and Captain Micho to join me. It's that time of year when we take a moment to say thank you. Next week is National Telecommunication Officers Week. It's a time to sort of focus in on what people, we call dispatchers, often do for work. Sometimes, in some cases, for those who don't know, there's debate about whether dispatchers are, in truth, first responders. Those who are experienced in public safety response and law enforcement know that the first responder is a dispatcher on the end of the phone. That person is the voice who we hear when we're frightened because somebody's in our house or some terrible event has occurred to us. In fact, we had a recent call, which, and Barbara is probably, it's a good thing she's not armed, because she's, if she were, she would be very unhappy with me right now. Because on December 5th, she took a call for burglary in progress. Two young men had entered a home where somebody was sitting in his house, and the burglary occurred while he was right there. She handled the call with cool aplomb, helped him through the difficult moments, was able to get identifying information, was able to dispatch officers. She managed the calls from the officers coming in over the radio, with the call to the person in our community who was in danger, never betraying anything but the slightest, but the most calm demeanor throughout dispatching officers. Ultimately, the two young men who entered the home intending to take this person's property, intruding into his castle, if you will, were apprehended and ultimately brought to justice, in no small part due to this telecommunications officer, Barbara Jones. The same thing occurs at the fire station every day. We take, at the police department, you know, any number of hundreds of calls a day, and I know the same is true for chief. Chief?
Absolutely. Just as recent as last Wednesday night, we had a fire in a condo. Our telecommunicator, Jerry Johnson, received the call from Concord 911. The passerby didn't even know, other than it was somewhere on Winding Pond Road, unbeknownst to him, they were able to work around the whole horn to get a better location to exactly where there was, even referring to places as tennis courts and clubhouses that sometimes aren't familiar with other places, and able to direct our crews to that scene, all while handling the onsite incident commander's request for mutual aid for other units, and handling it very appropriately with expediency, and, in general, taking care of everybody that was, first of all, our own responders at the scene, plus all the other towns there, and able to keep a cool head throughout while there were other calls going on at the same time. He did an excellent job that night, and it happens every day. And these are the people behind the scenes that most of us don't even, you know, realize or think about, because they're not out there, you know, putting a hose on the fire, not out there helping the people on the side of the road. But when it all comes together, it's the telecommunications that make the whole idea of that whole wheel work. They're the center hub. The wheel can't go around without that center hub, and that's what they do on a daily basis.
I know you've all met Captain Micho. Captain Micho commands the services division, within which is the telecommunications. Captain Micho?
I just, if you folks don't mind, I'd like to address the telecommunications people for just a second.
Floor is yours.
Okay. I just wanted to say, for the police side, who I work with every day, and for the fire side, that, you know, I'm a manager of a police department now, and without you folks, we could not run a police department, and I'm sure the fire chief couldn't run a firehouse. So, I just wanted to publicly say thank you to all of you, including the fire personnel, for the job that you do every single day. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
With that, Captain Micho, do you have anything else further, chief?
At this time, we'd just like to introduce and say thanks, and so you have a chance to meet these folks.
That would be fantastic.
That's okay. All right. Now, I got to tell you, I'm nervous to go into work tomorrow, because Barbara tells me if you say anything about me at all. Barbara? Thank you very much. Come on up. Bring Sam with you. If you'd go say hello. Maria?
Barbara.
Thank you, Maria.
Thanks, Barbara. Good to meet you.
Thank you, Barbara. Congratulations. Uh-oh. I think I was just criminally threatening. Jason Pinault couldn't be here. He had a prior commitment. Cindy Tuck?
Thank you.
Cindy couldn't be here either. Rachel Cawthorn? Here we go, Rachel. I just want to take a minute and say, you know, that the dispatch in the police department was really built by one person, with the help of some chiefs, but she really made the difference. And she's here tonight in support of those folks who she supported as a supervisor for near 24 years. Cindy McCann? Chief?
Thank you. Jerry Johnson?
Elizabeth Mall? Robert Samard? Christopher Schofield?
By the way, he's our newbie. He's the newest one.
I couldn't tell.
Couldn't tell. Still wet behind the ears. Benny Curl? Benny is our one and only part-time dispatcher and all-around good guy. And I'd like to also recognize Brian Johnson, who is the supervisor for these gentlemen as well.
Thank you. Counselor.
So, gentlemen, we have something for you as well. We have a Londonderry Town Council proclamation. Let me read it for you here. Where has the public safety dispatchers of the town of Londonderry, who process on an average of 100,000 telephone calls per year, are the first critical contact that our citizens have with Londonderry's emergency services? And where has the dispatchers are the vital link to those calling for help and to the police officers and firefighters and paramedics? And where has dispatchers monitor emergency personnel activities by radio, telephone, and provide them with life-saving information to ensure their safety? And where has the safety of our police officers, firefighters, paramedics, is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained by all public safety dispatchers from the citizens who telephone the Londonderry Police and Fire Departments? Where has the public safety dispatchers of the Londonderry Police and Fire Departments have contributed significantly to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire, and the treatment of patients in life-threatening situations? Where has each dispatcher, the unseen individual, providing a calm voice when emergency arises and have exhibited compassion, empathy, and professionalism, keeping our town and citizens safe? Therefore, we proclaim that April 8th to 16th, 2012, has National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Londonderry. Accordingly, we urge all of our citizens to honor the employees of Londonderry Police and Fire Communication Centers and recognize them for their diligence and professionalism in helping to keep our town, its citizens, employees, and visitors safe. Signed today by Londonderry Town Council. So, that's for you, whichever chief would like. Thank you. One other thing is, as the chairman of the Londonderry Dispatch Group, I learned a lot, so I thank you for that. So, we'll be moving on to other business. If you would like to stay, you're welcome. If not, I'll give you a moment to exit. Nobody wants to stay? Hang on. I'm going to go to one other thing first. You're back.
Not such a big audience this time.
Chief, do you have other public comment you'd like to discuss?
Yes. I do.
Proceed when you're ready.
One of the things that we often think about is, how do we, as a police department, build the relationship between our community and our agency? It's something that police in other communities around our country struggle with, in the sense that they oftentimes don't have the support of those citizens and residents and users of a community which they serve. It got me to thinking, what are some ways that we can enhance? Because I do believe that our relationship with our community is a very strong one. But how could we enhance it? And it got me to thinking about, well, what is that relationship really all about? Well, primarily, it seems to me that it's about trust. And that trust is that, in the main, the police are going to first understand the community which they serve, be responsive to the community which they serve, and do the best job they can in being fiduciaries for the trust which the community imparts to them. After all, you know, police are really the place where the government rubber meets the individual liberty road, and it is a vast responsibility which we have. So, I began to think, how do we enhance that trust? And it seems to me that the best way to do that is through transparency, as much as you can. Law enforcement, there are things that we can't really be transparent about by definition. But there's a lot of stuff that we can be transparent about, and we ought to do a better job at it. And to that end, I would like to suggest to you that every so often, I would come before you and briefly talk about an aspect of the police department and how it works. And I'm going to try to stay away from the, you know, homicide, life on the street stuff, and get into things that people may not know about the police department. So, this is the very first in that series, and I expect there'll be maybe eight or 10, 15-minute opportunities to very briefly talk about the police department and respond to any questions that the council might have, or that any member of the public might have for me. You know, sometimes the answer's going to be, I don't know. Those who work for me probably wouldn't suggest that that would happen very often, because I'm a blabbermouth. But the fact of the matter is, sometimes I may not know, and I'd be transparent about that, too. But we'd get you the answer as best we can. So, today, I would just want to talk a little bit about our police department. We generally have about 63 sworn officers. Right now, we have about 59 on deck. As you met our telecommunications staff, we have 11 other, actually 12 other, full-time, non-sworn personnel that perform a variety of functions, processing evidence, handling lost property, making sure that the increasingly important communications aspect of our job, which includes computers and cellphones and telephones and faxes and, well, not so much faxes, that's something that's gone away, scans and that sort of thing. We are divided into three divisions, one of which is the airport, fully funded by Manchester-Boston Regional Airport pursuant to a contract, which the members of our agency, specifically Captain Filone, who commands that division, worked very hard to get a five-year contract. They've had contracted law enforcement there for 18 years, first time they've had a five-year contract. Typically, they've gone three years, with five two-year options to the community. We also have a services division. You met some of the members of that division, and it is exactly what it suggests, something that supports the officer in the street or the detective taking a statement. And those are the two primary functions, really, of law enforcement. We truly view all the other jobs as support, mine, too. Though I got to tell you, I did make a car stop today, and you would have thought, you would have thought somebody, something really bad happened, because the first thing Barbara said, you know, in law enforcement parlance, "Get to the chief quick."
Was your ticket book outdated again?
I don't even have a ticket book. Anyway, I got most of this stuff right, though, anyway, I'm pleased to say. But the point in making that story is that I'm a supportive, I'm a support mechanism to the folks who work in the street. So, let me tell you about the topics that we want to talk about, including one that's coming up and very important. Hopefully, next time, what I want to talk about is the employee complaint process and the internal affairs process. How does it work? What do we do? You know, I often will get either a phone conversation, or a letter, or an email from somebody saying, "Well, I know you guys won't do anything," because it's a police officer, and nothing could be further from the truth. Not unlike the military, we view knowing of our mistakes, training to correct them, as an important function of what we do. If we don't know what we're doing wrong, we can't change it. We can't make it better. We can't do a better job for the citizens of our community. So, that'll be the next thing we talk about. We're also going to talk about the vehicle, our vehicle lease and maintenance program. You may know that next year is, we'll begin a new lease, and really, a new time for police cars in Londonderry. The old Crown Vic is no longer being made, and as a consequence, we've got a committee of officers who've come together, along with Russ Goodnow, who's the fleet manager, to make some decisions about what direction we're going to go in. There are three, we're really looking at two. There's the Ford Police Interceptor, which is two different models. It's a sedan and an SUV, and then there's a Chevy Caprice, which isn't out yet. So, we're going to be looking at those. We're also going to be looking at maybe changing the color of our cars. You may be aware, and the community may be aware, that more and more police cars are moving towards a black and white model. Primary reason for that is extremely high visibility and recognition, and we're looking at that possibility. From my perspective, the only thing, I'm not opposed to it, in fact, I think it's a good idea, and I think it can be managed well. The concern for me would be that we integrate the blue and gold that has been traditional Londonderry colors into that black and white model, so that we do not forget the history of our police department and our community. It's the other thing with regard to the color, we hope to have a conversation with the community about it and get some input, and we'll see how that goes. We also want to talk about things like records management, evidence management, special units within the PD, not just special operations, but we have several other specially trained units. We want to talk about things like freedom of information and how it pertains to law enforcement, and how do we manage it? What about the training function? What is the role of prosecution within our agency? How is it different than other states? Why is it important to us, and why do we value it? Additionally, we want to talk about communications and the increasingly technologically developed role of communications and law enforcement, and how that works. We want to talk about policy and procedures and a variety of other topics. I'd also take any suggestions that you might have, that you might want me to talk about. I do this in order to enhance the bond that I think really exists between the police department and our community, so I take any suggestions from anybody. And lastly, on this topic, I'm developing a program where I might be alone most of the time, but I'm going to institute in May a program, Lunch with the Chief. And once a month, I'm going to be at a particular place and spend an hour there, and anybody who wants to talk about anything can certainly come to talk to me about it. I haven't got the schedule down, but in the next meeting, I'll tell you what that schedule is, I'll publicize it, and I encourage anybody who wants to talk about anything to come by and have a chat. So, thank you for this time. I look forward to the next conversation, and if anybody has any questions, I'm delighted to answer them.
Thank you. Gentlemen?
I forgot my wallet.
Gentlemen, any questions? Chief? Couple of quick things, chief. One suggestion would be, is, people need to, help people understand the Amber Alert. So, when a child goes missing, you know, I think if you want to get the attention of the community, minutes or hours. So, if you could explain to people that when, you know, so they can get comfortable with, you know, if they can't find somebody for, you know, for a short period of time, they shouldn't hesitate about calling you guys, and what's going to happen when they do? And the other thing is, is I think Dave should find you an expense account for Lunch with the Chief. Did you have anything, Tom?
I wanted to encourage you also, in those series of discussions, talk about the collection of old drugs and disposal of them, and also if we have any thoughts about any type of an amnesty program for maybe parents or relatives who have come across illegal substances that they may have found in their family's possession, of how they might dispose of them as well.
Let me address the second first. We haven't thought about it. I think it's a great idea. With regard to the first, in late April, I believe the 28th, but I'm not sure about the date, is our semi-annual prescription drug drop-off day. We're open for about six hours on a Saturday. Again, I don't know the hours off the top of my head. It's typically from about 9:00 to 3:00, and we take any kind of prescription drug of any kind. It's turned over to the DEA after an inventory.
shouldn't hesitate about calling you guys and what's going to happen when they do. And the other thing is, is I think Dave should find you an expense account for Lunch with the Chief.
Did you have anything, Tom?
I wanted to encourage you also to, in those series of discussions, talk about the collection of old drugs and disposal of them, and also if we have any thoughts about any type of an amnesty program for maybe parents or relatives who have come across illegal substances that they may have found in their family's possession of how they might dispose of them as well.
Let me address the second first. We haven't thought about it. I think it's a great idea. With regard to the first, in late April, I believe the 28th, but I'm not sure about the date, is our semi-annual prescription drug drop-off day. We're open for about six hours on a Saturday. Again, I don't know the hours off the top of my head. It's typically from about nine to three, and we take any kind of prescription drug of any kind. It's turned over to the DEA after an inventory, and they have an agent on site. It's completely a no-look situation. You drop off those prescription drugs, and they're out of your house. With regard to the second, let me think about it, because I think it's a great idea, and it would give parents the opportunity to deal with a situation at home without necessarily involving the harder side of the police.
Anything further? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Oh, yeah, by the way, Chief, all presentations, less than eight slides. Oh, I'm not kidding.
I'm not really a slide guy.
Good, good. Don't come with slides, then. Okay, hey, one quick other thing under public comment, before I go to the audience for public comment. Dave, can we talk a little bit about the email we received from Mark Brewer today regarding Kelly? Kelly Road?
Yeah, Kelly Road regarding the issue the council discussed at your last meeting, is that, as you know, Kelly Road is also in Manchester. And Manchester has not yet begun the process of their 911 renumbering in consultation with the state 911 Bureau. So, you know, a thought has emerged where it might make sense to hold off on any street renaming at that point, to see what Manchester does, and the simple thought is, we don't want to reinvent the wheel twice. And so I know that Mark has turned it over to his public safety, or asked his public safety officials over at the city to engage with Londonderry to start that discussion. So hopefully, that can get resolved at some point in the near future. But it appears that Manchester is not immediately prepared to make a recommendation on that issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Does that, that seems to imply that since we had postponed, I believe, till the 16th, further discussion of the Kelly Road, that perhaps we want to table that indefinitely until we see that Manchester's going to engage in that discussion as well?
Yeah, if you're inclined to dispose of the issue, then what I would do is simply defeat the resolution. And at the appropriate time, we'll resuminate a different resolution for the council's consideration.
Just so you guys have an idea, when I spoke to Mark Brewer, he really had no idea of the scope and what was involved. And then, once he found out about it, he's got a whole education on it now. So it was much more entailed than even he knew. Okay? So, moving along. If there's anything else, anything from the public for public, during public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no public hearings. We have no old business. We'll move directly to new business. New business, Resolution 2012-04, relative to the appointment of a deputy treasurer. Do I have a volunteer?
Volunteer to read or be deputy treasurer?
Volunteer, excuse me, volunteer to read.
I'll volunteer. This is a resolution relative to the appointment of a deputy town treasurer. His first reading is April 2nd, 2012, and if passed, we will adopt it tonight. Whereas RSA 4129A allows the appointment of a deputy town treasurer who shall perform all duties of the treasurer in her absence, and whereas said appointment by the town treasurer requires confirmation of the town council, and whereas the town treasurer has adopted, rather, has appointed Joe Paradise to serve as deputy treasurer during the treasurer's term of office, now therefore be it resolved by the town council, the town of Londonderry, that Joe Paradise is hereby confirmed as deputy town treasurer in accordance with RSA 4129A, effective upon passage of this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Second by Councilor Green. Discussion.
Oh, I just have a question. The last sentence says, "The treasurer has appointed Joe to serve as deputy treasurer during the treasurer's term of office." That means they can't be removed by the treasurer?
Well, yes, if the treasurer renominated someone else and someone else is, council concurs, somebody else. And just as a note of information is that for the last week, John Connolly has been signing the checks, because the banks are very slow getting the change of signature cards out. So Kathy, although she has been sworn in, is not officially performing duties until the change of signature cards come in from the bank. So the deputy treasurer provides for a transition during those times when there's a change in treasurer as well.
Okay. So any further comment on this, Dave? Is there anything you want to talk about as far as the deputy treasurer is concerned? For the town treasurer, Kathy Wagner, is there anything that you would like to add to this resolution before we move forward?
I would like to ask Dave if he could explain, because where I am chairman of the old Home Day Committee, I have authorization of signing those expenditures. And we felt that Sue Hickey and Dave and I all worked out something, so I'd just like you to explain what is going to transpire in that area.
Yeah, the audit is never annulled with someone approving their own expenses, so, well, it's a new approach. So what we're probably going to do is have the deputy treasurer sign those checks, and they're, what are they, 10 checks a year, maybe, or 15 checks a year?
Probably like 20.
It's not a significant amount, but just to maintain, just to maintain that online transaction, for your strategy to do, handling the public funds, is Sue would notify Joe when those checks are ready, and then Joe would give staff approval to process them or actually come in and sign them themselves.
I mean, I think Joe was a perfect candidate for this, being on the Budget Committee, former town councillor, chairman. He understands the working of the town, so if anything does happen, and since I'm incapacitated to do my duties, he would be a perfect candidate to pick up and move forward with that.
Thank you. Is there anything else from the council? Seeing nothing further. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes affirmative, it's 5-0. Okay. Karen, are we going to have a presentation tonight on wagon wheel or just do the resolution?
Public hearing, two weeks.
Right, this is just the first read on it?
I'm sorry, first reading, sorry.
Right, and then if you have any questions, that's okay. If you had any questions about it, after the resolution, we have a map of this area for you, for you to look at. But if you do have any questions, three of us are here tonight to answer.
Fantastic, thank you. Since this is the first reading, we'll probably waive second reading. Can I have a volunteer to please read Resolution 2012-05?
Sure. Resolution 2012-05, a resolution relative to renaming streets and wagon wheels, mobile home park. The first reading is today, April 2nd, 2012. Whereas the town of Londonderry is enabled by New Hampshire revised statutes annotated 231:133 to name public and/or private highways that conform to the requirements of the enhanced 911 telecommunications system. And whereas the town council established a street naming system task force to enhance public safety by reviewing and correcting addresses which are non-compliant with NH911 addressing standards. And whereas streets and wagon wheels, mobile home park have been identified as non-compliant for the following reasons: number one, addressing is based on the property address and a unit number; number two, unit numbers are arranged inconsistently throughout the park with odds and evens on the same side in non-sequential order; number three, names are not in use by USPS or other delivery providers. And whereas the task force, in cooperation and consultation with property owners, recommend the following alternate street names, now therefore be it resolved by the Londonderry Town Council that the following name changes be enacted to become effective 60 days following adoption of this resolution. The private street commonly referred to as A Street be renamed Prairie Lane. The private street commonly referred to as B Street be renamed Mustang Lane. The private street commonly referred to as C Street be renamed Pinto Lane. The private street commonly referred to as Circle Drive be renamed Stage Code Circle. Properties will be renumbered according to the town's addressing policy. Today's the first reading, with the scheduled second reading and public hearing scheduled for 4/16/2012.
Gentlemen, any questions on the reading? Yes?
Question, Dave, are we aware of any citizen objection to these renaming?
Karen?
We had a meeting on February 22nd. In fact, we had two meetings, one in the afternoon we had here in this room, and then we had one, we had scheduled one for the library for the evening, but they actually showed up here, so that if people didn't want to come out at night, we gave them the opportunity to come out at 3:00 in the afternoon. The group in the afternoon were supportive for our street names that we had. The group in the evening wanted to change out two names. One was Pinto, that they wanted to change to Apache. And Apache sounded like an area that we already have in town, up off Yellowstone, that is named for Indians, so we didn't make that change. But they also wanted Harness changed to Prairie, so we made that change for them. And they had told me that they would get back to me within a week with any more changes, and they did not. And as I said, that was February 22nd, and we haven't heard back from them. They have had conversations with Jay Houli at the post office to see what the change would be for them, because they have a mail station similar to Whispering Pines, so that numbering will have to be changed to the street names if this change goes through.
Thank you, Karen. Any other further comments from the council? Yes, Joe?
So the diagram we currently have in our possession, you put this in here, that's the numbering that's currently on the...
That is currently what the numbering is out there, and as you can see, it's very difficult for the fire and police to find the units, because there is no consistency out there.
So how would they number? Would they number from A to the circle going down?
I don't know how they did this. I have no idea.
You know what I'm saying? How would we number? What's our...
We will number each street individually.
Okay.
Because we're going to have individual street names, and they'll have to put new signs out there.
So if there's four, it'd be 1, 2, 3, and 4, or whatever, something like that?
Right, B2s will be on the right, and the odds will be on the left, just like our other streets.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, I missed getting the second on the reading.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Seeing no other questions, ladies and gentlemen, this is your only announcement, that there is going to be a public hearing on April 16th, 2012, at 7:00 here at the Town Council Chambers. So if you have any questions about the street naming, please come that evening.
Thank you. We'll be notifying all the residents within Whispering Pines, excuse me, of wagon wheels of that hearing. So they'll all be notified.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. We have no minutes to approve. Liaison reports. Okay, gentlemen, email went out today with a draft on the liaison committees. Does anyone have any changes they want to make to what was sent out?
I sent a late one to Margot. Oh, she didn't get it. I just, I said planning board and Budget Committee. I don't think they were picked.
Well, Tom's got Budget Committee. Do you guys want to do something differently?
No, it was just, those were last year's, weren't they?
No, if I didn't change them, you kept them.
Okay, then I'm fine with what I got.
Then you're good? Everybody else is good? All right, Margot, you're all set?
All right.
Was there any changes to it? I didn't get a chance to see it.
You wanted elderly affairs, you got elderly affairs. Jim went to ZBA. You gave up alternate of the planning board, he took alternate of the planning board. Am I missing anything, Margot? I think Jim went to Traffic Safety Committee, Heritage Commission, he did a lot of Sean's old ones. All right, so this is all we got for the next year, speak now or is moving forward? All right, let's go forward with liaison reports. Town manager report.
Just one issue. There's been some discussion and concern in the community about press reports about a prison being located in Manchester. So we had staff do some research, and just in a nutshell, that is not the case. What happens is, during the adoption of the state's FY12-13 budget, the staff was directed by a legislature to seek proposals to construct and operate a privately-owned prison in the state. Consequently, one of the prospective proposals approached the property owner of a large property up on Hacket Hill in Manchester, which is next to the Hooks at Line. The city learned of that inquiry, took a look at its zoning, current zones, and amended its zoning, which allowed places of a prison industrial land in South Manchester, specifically land on Perimeter Road on the other side of the runway away from Londonderry, about eight tenths of a mile from the town borders. And there's another small area at the intersection of Harvey Road and South Willow at the end of the extended runway, about four tenths of an acre. So currently, there have been no proposals made to the city, or obviously to Londonderry, because the council heard about that first, for citing or construction of a prison. If that does occur sometime in the future, obviously, we'll surf around with the planning board and the councils, with the council opportunity to weigh in on the measure. But at this point, it was just a question of a private proposer inquiring as to a private property owner, that's as far as the communications have gone. So we received three or four inquiries from citizens. We responded with that information. They thanked us for the information, requested the town keep an eye on the situation, which obviously we will.
Anything else, Dave?
That's it.
That's it. All right, I'll accept the motion for the appointment of Amy Finnmore to the Solid Waste and Environmental Committee as an alternate member, term expiring December, I'm assuming 31st of 2013.
So moved.
I need a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes affirmative, we have 5-0. All right, so we interviewed everybody for the Manchester Airport Authority, so I'm looking for a recommendation for Chief Dolan.
I'd like to recommend Steve Young be the MAA representative, and that we submit that name to the Board of Alderman for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Well, I think the prior councils indicated a preference to getting more people involved and different people involved on various boards, so I was hoping that we could follow that and try to do that. We had a number of candidates. And I know Steve was on two other terms, but maybe perhaps we should do that. Additionally, I know that two of the candidates, at least two, were veterans, and, you know, I think Congress just passed a law regarding trying to give veterans a preference, so I'd kind of like to see something in that end.
So we have Don, who's on there, who's also, I believe, a veteran.
Mike Boyle, I think, he was a veteran, too.
Yeah, so, so something I asked Margot to do going forward, and I have an opportunity to discuss it with you all, is when someone comes in and applies, I think what happens is, is they come in, they apply, we pick who we're going to pick, and then these people have come forward, and we haven't recognized them for stepping up and applying. So I've asked Margot to put together a letter that goes to whoever doesn't apply, puts in that letter from us, saying, "We really appreciate you coming," and that, "Here are the other positions that are available," so that we can start, you know, and mostly, since Margot manages it, we can start building a library of who we have and who we can go to in the community. So that was the one piece on that. What I can share with you in my conversations with the Airport Authority is, is that they're looking for somebody with past experience. So if we want to go down a different path, that's fine. If we don't, that's fine. Don serves for one more year, so I think the people who came in will have an opportunity again in a year if they're still interested, if that's the path we want to go down. So that's all the information. Any other further, I'm not trying to answer your questions, I'm trying to share information. Any other further discussion?
Do we submit any other names at this point?
We have a motion on the floor and a second, so we vote.
Okay.
So, any other further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes affirmative, passes 3-2. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second? Second to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative, it's 5-0. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you next time.